I'll call the meeting to order and ready stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. First on the agenda, Dale Book. Roger's property management, he's got two or three things he's gonna talk about here, so.
Yeah, good morning, Dale Book, Willie County Economic Development. We had something on the agenda for you today, I know, so this will just kind of be a heads up for next time Rogers property agreement. The Rogers group has purchased some property, twenty-six acres on one hundred kind of north of Pajers Crossing. Redevelopment has been working with them as they develop the property and they're gonna put on a they're gonna build a shell building there. And like we have done in the past in redevelopment, working with companies, developers who are willing to put up a prospective building, we help with some of the hearing costs. We're gonna do a lease like we've done before. However, we weren't ready. We skipped a step on a public hearing that we caught a week or so ago, so that that will happen shortly. So next month, our next meeting for council, I'll present that to you and you'll get some advanced materials on that. Redevelopment pays that, but it does need council's approval. So more more to follow on that. So nothing, nothing to worry about with that today. As far as the annual approval of the compliance forms for tax abatements, quite a few companies who have been given tax abatements from council have submitted their CF ones and the auditor and I have reviewed those. What we're reviewing them for is, again, is the investment made? Was the employment made? And are the wages with that employment in alignment? And all but two of them, and as I think you had in some of your advanced notes, Gator cases, while they submitted their CF one, there are other tax forms that they had not submitted in a timely fashion. And so I believe that we would not suggest them that that gets approved. Once they get all those those forms submitted next year, they're eligible to pick up where they left off. But as of now, we're suggesting or not recommending the approval of that. And the same with Indiana materials processing. They had some personal property and they did not submit on time. And I believe, you know, looking into it, they may have sold that property. So other than that, all the other compliance forms look good. Again, the auditor and I.
And you mean by property, you mean by machines or something?
Yeah, production equipment, yeah, those kind of things.
So it looks like everyone, every company's in compliance except for Gator cases and Indiana materials? So do I, what, what do you want to do on this? Go ahead and prove these or?
Make a motion, we allow the council chairman and president to sign with the exception of Gator case and Indiana. And approve those if they have the proper.
Well, second, yeah.
Got a motion by John, a second by Kim, that we approve the continued abatement except for Gator cases and Indiana materials? And the chairman signed. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. Okay? Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, I were, while I'm up here, I can give a brief update on sand strategies and what we're having. Got our first month in on the working with them. So what I'm passing out is just kind of some notes for things stand. So a couple of things that we've been able to achieve already as we've greatly increased the size of the task force. You know, we had a core force, you know, council.
Could you hold on a second? Can you hear? Okay, can you speak louder? There we go.
Yeah. So we're working on a much more comprehensive group to be on that, other than just kind of the core group we started with. So now that that group is well over thirty individuals and those those folks are either stakeholders from cross-sections all over the county. And then we've got over thirty on the provider list that we've started to work with. The most significant thing we've got accomplished, and I'll start pushing this out on social media and other avenues, is we've added to my, the economic development website, we have a broadband dropdown and we have a a launch speed test that people need to start taking throughout the county. That speed test will help us build a map and make the case for where we've got issues, not only for the grants that we're gonna be helping to apply for, but then also showing providers where there's opportunities. We, yeah, as you can, you can kind of read through this and I'll answer some questions. But the other key thing is that sand strategy is working with some of these providers already. They're familiar with them and understand the opportunity that that will provide if they come to Willie County. One being that they will do all the, most of the legwork for the state grants. The biggest state grant is the Next Level Connections. That was postponed by the state just a few weeks, and so we expect to hear hear about that in the next four to six weeks. And those will be the first chance for, you know, our task force along with the internet service providers to start looking for some of those state grants. So, you know, I think we're off to a pretty good start and we have, you know, really looking forward to getting some of these providers in front of our local business folks and stakeholders and talk about the need and get some excitement to get them to come in here.
Questions for Dale?
Dale, under Affordable Connectivity Program, you talk about the federal government being involved and the discount that is provided. There's one sentence here I'm just curious about, since qualifying tribal lands can receive up to seventy-five dollars per month. Does Willie County have qualifying tribal lands?
I don't believe they do. I'll double check that, but there are some, you know, in the region. The other, the other interesting thing about that is, you know, with sand's familiarity with some of this, we do believe that there could be tablets and basically free internet to some of our citizens because of that federal grant. But that, that's a good question, Councilman, and I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, Scott? Come on now.
I did. Morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to basically ask for some money to close the case that we've had since nineteen eighty-four. I'm not gonna go into details of the case. I'll let DJ, if you have questions, or Andrew Mills. We've been working on this, trying to get this closed. Basically, we've been storing some bones that haven't been identified. And now we have the technologies to basically identify and they're telling me that we have a comparable from one of the next of kin. So the price is not in my budget, so I'm here to ask for the money funds.
So actually, you just, excuse me, you need just to satisfy or clear up the case or finish the case off or close the book on or whatever. How are you gonna say?
Of course, exactly. This case has been hanging around since early eighty. We believe that the actual crime, if there was a crime, it's not fruitful at this point, occurred in Allen County, Indiana. However, the body was recovered here, which makes it technically disclaiming responsibility of holding burial. And that is by operation of state law, where required, coroner's required to provide services for that burial. So in this particular case, we had information that the victim was, her identity was perhaps used after her death. And the body was held in place last year. Neither of that is neither here nor there, but I'd appreciate the facts to a degree. And this has been, I've been here now twenty-three years and this has cropped up periodically throughout throughout the years. And it's something that the state police and our local law enforcement officers have talked about on and off through the years. And there's really benefit to the county this way. One, we closed a case that is pulled and removed from our storage. The bone, the deceit, is the right thing to do as well as the legal thing to do. And there's an expense to that. Secondly, it helps protect the bills, clear a case administratively that has been hanging around. Of course, it's law enforcement officer, he is chief law enforcement officer of the county, closing a case involving the death of a deceased. That does not come without an expense. So for my part in it, I have no obligation to this case. It's long been more my time. But I recognize that value myself. So as it relates to the eighty-three hundred dollars to be spent to inherit, marry this person, I have pledged from my funds, twenty-five hundred dollars to reduce that cost. Because I recognize that responsibility of this as well. And to the coroner, I were talking about that. It made sense for us to come and obviously ask for the funds for his behalf, on his behalf, but also to let you know that he was concerned with the case, ready to put it to bed. Beyond that, I don't think I can add add too much more. I'm happy to answer any questions with respect to Mills. He answered any questions.
I think the actual price total just for the testing is eight thousand eight hundred.
So it was eighty-one, twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred hasn't been deducted from that yet.
No, but, you know, either I'm gonna have the option of, because obviously I have some legal things I have to do, like advertise once we identify to see if the family will step up and claim her. And if they don't, then I'll be coming back before you to ask for more funding for the burial expenses of it.
Yeah, I misspoke. I was, I was already ahead on burial. Yeah, this was just the fact that we identified. And we have pretty good reasons to believe that the family has no interest. Because the family were among those who may have been involved and been fraud. So we doubt seriously whether they're gonna have the interest in participating. That part of that research.
I'm not seeing any dates on here. When, when was the?
Well, this quote was given to Andrew Mills originally, and then we had it requoted to the coroner's office. And March seventh of twenty twenty-three, that was the expense. And we had another lab that was gonna do it. They ended up going out of business. And this is the only lab that we have researched to be able to finish this because the technology is finally catching up with.
And is the price low?
As far as I know.
Price does hold. Terrabond is the only lab right now doing this type of testing. There's some other labs that do other genetic testing and things like that. But right now, this is the only one that needs this danger for like law enforcement prosecution.
So the work hasn't been done yet?
No.
Okay, thank you. I was thinking that it had been and you're coming asking me.
No, we're waiting for the money funds to do it.
Yeah, the state police lab has everything ready to send. They've done all their annotations that they can and they're ready to send it. It's just something right now that our lab does not do.
And then after they identify who it is, then I'll have to advertise that person for the news media and everything for thirty days. If they don't claim it, then that's when I'll come before you guys get.
Is there an additional expense to that for the media coverage?
I have, I have to advertise in the local paper and then the rest will be done during social media through the coroner's association. So the only thing I'll have is the local papers.
And that's what threw me with you, DJ, because a lot of times it's the other way.
No, I wouldn't let them do that. It would have been the other way.
So Scott, how many total dollars? We want to get this correct.
Well, the total thing, not including DJ, is eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. You're willing to give two thousand five hundred dollars to it, so subtract that from it.
Fifty-three, eighty-five?
Mm-hmm. And I don't have a budget. I didn't budget for this kind of thing. I know other counties like Marion County that I've reached out to. You know, they have.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, correct. They have numerous cases. In fact, they said they had thirty-five that they just buried last week. So I call them experts in unclaimed bodies, so.
So when, when they identify it and then the family won't acknowledge that that's their family or part of their kin, then you're gonna be, excuse me.
Back in here asking for another ten thousand or whatever.
No, actually, I, from the pricing, I'll have to bid out for my local funeral home, thank the the cost of it. And I'm, I'm thinking it'll probably be around, depending on how the trustee works with us, because actually, it was, the person was found in Columbia Township, so the trustee has to give me a burial spot. So we'll have open and closing and then whatever container we decide to put it in.
Right.
So I think it'll be less than five thousand dollars. And I'll come back and ask for.
What's the probability of you finding out who this person is?
I would say extremely high. We believe we know what family and who she is. Her family does not want to speak to us, if we get that very clear. And so we've actually done some further investigations over the last couple of years where we've gone and pulled trash, boy, did I have to make a chain DNA and we found female DNA compared to. Our lab just does not do familial comparison, so that's why we've got some.
I'm gonna say the state police has already spent a lot of money on this case. It should have been easy case to close, but the technology wasn't there. You know, today's standards, it would be fairly clear.
Which funding was this?
No.
What's that? Which funding, which line item was this?
DJ's budget.
Sweet, let me off this night.
Plenty of them. We have, we cannot vote on this today because it wasn't advertised. We will have to vote on it next month now that we have. So John will research that and see what, what line item we want that to go.
Can we get the permission to proceed then? Or, because we're gonna pay for it one way or the other.
You want a general feeling is what, is what you want and?
Yeah. Yes, for me. We need to finish it up for everybody that's involved in it. So I'm in favor.
General consensus is?
I'm in favor.
Well, I start, actually, my brother Taren and I were talking about this last month. We both went out to this actual scene. And back then, it was skeleton. So, you know, he couldn't believe that it was still on, in gold keys.
So we're looking at six thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars, so.
I'll use DJ as my down payment.
You just started.
So, so general consensus is yes, go ahead and proceed.
Okay.
And we'll take care of this at our next meeting.
Okay. Next thing is, I'm sorry, I can't be here for budget hearing. I have to be at leadership conference and I can't change those flight arrangements or motel stay. Basically, on my budget, I didn't, you know, there's a few changes and this and that. But, you know, the cost of everything is going up. And I also have a, I'm filling the deputy's position, should be starting and should be up to speed by October. And then I have a second one that'll come on after she retires from Corwin City in January. Okay, any other questions for me while you got me?
Is it possible?
I know you do. You know, if you did your job back in eighty.
Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy? Do you have your budget booked? She cannot be here at our budget day, so she has to be on the agenda.
Right, Cindy Doolittle clerk. I have two budgets. I have one for the election and then one for the actual court side. I don't know which one you want to look at first. I'm thinking about doing the one-on-one, which is my trust side. That's all my personal expenses, my supplies and my charges. My budget from two thousand twenty-two and the one that, I mean, I'm sorry, the budget from two thousand twenty-three and the one that I'm presenting for two thousand twenty-four, I did lower some of my normal charges, which was printing. I lowered that by twenty-five hundred dollars. And my dues and subscriptions, I did have to up three hundred dollars to a thousand because our dues have increased with the clerks association and our voter registration, our Indiana Voter Registration Association, the dues have increased, so I did have to increase that. But it's pretty bare minimal what I have in my budget for the trust side. I don't know if you have any questions regarding that. As far as the bank charges, I've been questioned about the bank charges before. We pay four hundred dollars a month for, called positive pay with the bank. And what we do is we upload our checks daily that we write to attorneys, to different, you know, community corrections, bond refunds. And we have a problem with our account number being stolen quite a bit. We just had one yesterday. And a check tried to come in for twenty-five hundred dollars and we were able to catch it and refuse it. But if we did not have positive pay, it would be bad because we probably have, just this year alone, it's probably up to twelve thousand dollars that we have caught on fraudulent checks and debits out of our account.
Because of positive pay?
No. Well, because of positive pay, yes. That has helped us catch it because we see the checks that come through and then we tell the bank, yes, we want you to pay this. And if we did not do that, this is what we would have. So anyway, I just kind of wanted to explain the bank service fees.
The bank charges you four hundred dollars a month to review your own checks that are coming into your account?
No, no, we upload the checks into Lake City Bank. Then they don't want to pay those che, we can review them. I mean, we want to make sure when those checks come through, those are actual checks that we wrote. If, if, if we didn't have that, they would just pay it. They would just pay those checks. There would be no way of stopping those checks. And then there's no guarantee that they put that money back in our account unless there would be an investigation to see who is reproducing these checks. And I'm telling you, people are getting good at reproducing these checks. If I, if I would have known better, I would have thought that that was a check that had my signature. I, I think they took a picture of it, of my check. And then they were clever. So, but anyway, that's why we have.
So the check goes to you and then you send it to them?
Yes, well, every day the checks are written and then we upload it into our system. And then we send that file to the bank. And then they know what checks then, that, they know what checks that can be cashed.
And that's why they may not pay it because you have, you have sent it there, it didn't go directly.
Like the check yesterday actually was a check number that we wrote to community corrections for one hundred dollars. It already was cashed a hundred dollars to community corrections. And when it came back, it said duplicate check number. So we were able to go in and and see what happened. And we realized, yes, someone had stolen the account number, the check, and put their magic touch.
These are checks that your office is writing?
Yes.
That they're fraudulently reproducing?
Yes. Are they getting access to that because it's going electronically?
No, there's probably so many different, there's probably so many different ways. And you have to understand, we, you know, we send a lot of checks to maybe people that have already, you know, been in jail, committed, you know, I don't know, it has to be a criminal mind to be able to do this. We don't know. I mean, we don't know how they're doing. Everybody's gotten clever. I mean, we've had, I think it was a couple of months ago in Georgia, someone was trying to remote deposit some checks in an account in Georgia. So we have no idea of knowing how they're doing it, but.
Do you have to have this completed by a certain time each day?
Yes. We get notice in the morning if something didn't go through right. We have till noon, noon that day to make a decision.
What, on your bank service charges, what is the amount for that positive pay?
It's four hundred a month. And then we have, I think, I believe it's three hundred dollars extra for if something gets through and there's a service fee for somebody. So we have a little bit extra in it, but not much.
Cindy, have you shopped around banks to see?
Oh, we did. We did. Years ago, the council and the commissioners came to me and we shopped around banks and the service fees were outrageous. That we don't get any service fees because we have so many checks coming in. No bank, no bank. We went to every bank here and no bank would match what we have right now, so. And we also were at Chase Bank one time before we switched and we had fraudulent checks then as well. So.
So then with this service, they take responsibility for any checks that they end up cashing that was not on the approved list, the bank does?
Well, yes, because we're, well, because we send a file that has the check numbers, the amount, and those are the only ones they're gonna pay. Those are the only ones gonna pay. But we still have a responsibility in our office that we have to make that decision by noon. But the worst case scenario is if we don't make, if we forget to make a decision, they're not gonna pay it. But my biggest issue, what if it was a mistake in our office and that check should have been paid? Maybe it went to an attorney and it should have been paid. And we forget, and maybe there was, maybe we transpose the check number, just say, for example. Then, yes, that'd be our responsibility because then they could get a service fee and but anyway, it's, it's, it saved the county thousands of dollars. It really has.
Okay.
So that's my, all the questions, as far as the trust then, then I can go on to the election then. This is the one I'm dreading. All right. All right.
Give us a minute or two to find.
Yes, okay.
It's this one, right?
What, what account number is it? What account number is it?
It would be the 122.
Just kept a couple pages back from where you were.
It looks like three pages.
Yeah, okay. We're right on it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Cindy.
All right, as far as the election budget, you're going to see, um, the 2023 budget is for this election, um, for primary and general is 74,100. That's quite a bit lower because it is, yeah, I know, that's why I needed to explain.
The number.
Yeah. Because it's the municipal election, a lot smaller election. So that's why that is so low. Um, in 2022, I don't know if you have those figures. Okay, the election budget was 165,900. And then of course, 2021 was an off election year, but we still had some things that we had to still do, so 16,352. So the, the budget that I'm presenting is 178,100 for the election budget. There was a couple things that Tiffany had to add for me as a new line item. Contracted services and equipment and program maintenance. Okay, so with that, those two line items, that kind of brought up my budget some, but, um, what the, what the, we met with the election board, um, last week and I don't know if you're aware of this, some of you might be aware of this, um, with our election equipment now, all of our election equipment in 2024 is going to have to have the verifiable paper trail that this heavy machine that you have to hook up, every machine's going to have that. And with that, um, the state is making us get all new cases, um, that, that will house all of the equipment, which is very heavy. And, um, they're over 50 pounds and we cannot lift them. It's, um, pole workers aren't going to be able to lift them. So we've got with different counties and what the, the, what the state has suggested to is we contract with, um, a moving company to have the equipment actually delivered the night before the election, um, and set up the equipment. So the pole workers don't have to do that because they are so heavy. And our average pole worker is, you know, 70 years old and you just, they're trying to get the equipment in their cars and, the other choice that we had was we could get a bipartisan team to deliver the equipment. But are they going to be dependable? Are they going to call in sick? With the contracted, and then what if they get hurt? The county would be liable if they, and they're delivering this equipment. So, um, the election board met last week and we discussed, um, that, um, there's a moving company in Columbia City that is, um, willing to do this for us. And if you contract with this person, then they're responsible for getting it, getting that to the pole. Um, they have insurance, they take their, their responsibility, kind of off the county as far as, again, if somebody gets hurt. Um, our biggest fear next year is 2024 presidential election. And, you know, it's hard to get workers the way it is. What if, you know, you try to get dependable people, but, you know, if you, if you hire a bipartisan team, that means, you know, we have to have a Democrat, a Republican, go in a car together, have to have a big enough truck, enough teams. This moving company would have one big truck with plenty.
Have time to get to all the poles though?
Yeah, all that for the day before and then the day after they will pick up the equipment. So anyway, that's what those two line items are. And, um, and then we're going to be also hiring, um, mechanics. As far, far as, um, every year we get phone calls and there's an issue, maybe something, one of the machines goes down. Or maybe it's just user error. Jessica does a wonderful job running the election, but she cannot be everywhere. She cannot be in the office, she cannot be out. We have to have solid people, you know, we have a few in our office that have been training. But we just need to make sure that, you know, we have a couple mechanics that are able to be able to lift the equipment, to be able to, like I say, help the pole workers if they have an issue because if not, and there's an issue, there could be lines out the door. So, um, those are the two, the main two line, new line items that we got this year in the budget. I don't know if they presented you with what I typed. I kind of wrote it over.
This doesn't show the last presidential, what?
Right, I don't have that. I don't have that. I didn't know.
I do. I'm just curious.
Yeah, uh, it was higher than that. I was thinking it was under, I, I think because I was so. Yeah, I did want the red, but I believe that it was, I was thinking it was like, I don't know, I was thinking it was under 200,000, but it was in quite a bit.
The state should put a burden on the county.
They did, they did. Because right now, we even have to have storage now. We don't have room in the office. So we have now an office over here in the health department, the old health department that's housing our equipment. At least the machines will go there. We, we haven't got them all yet, but that's where they'll go.
Has the state offered any reimbursement for any of the added expenses?
They have not, but actually I talked to Secretary of State, um, Diego.
Morales.
Yes, and, um, I told him that it would be nice, you know, because he was talking about maybe there could be some funding, whatever. And I said, it would be nice to the counties if we could get something to help reimburse for what this has done to the counties. He said he'd take that in consideration and, um, no, but at this time there's not, but. Oh, I talked to him about it, so.
Well, as we go through the budget process, you know, 28th is just early to start. Everyone's.
Yeah.
This out, uh, you know, I'm sure we'll be talking with the again.
Yeah, that's fine. I just kind of wanted, I'm going to be at conference at the end of the month and I didn't really want you to have like shocks.
It would have been, what is she thinking?
Yeah. Yes, yes, that, just remember that.
Real quick, do you expect the 20, the next year's budget after 2025 budget to be significantly less?
Um, well, it's, yeah, oh, 2025, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So it goes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we'll be looking forward to 2025.
Cindy, would you have anybody in your office that could go with these? If, if you go with the delivery people, is there anybody in your office that could go to make sure that it kind of oversee the project?
Well, we, we talked to the election board and since, you know, it is bipartisan, we talked to them about going in a separate car to follow the truck to make sure that they are delivered. So that's kind of.
Right.
Yes, so we have a plan in place.
Somebody needs to be with them.
Yes.
Can these machines be compromised by the right people?
We have to know what to do. Um, they will be sealed. And if that seal is broken in the morning when the workers get there, then they would know by a. But they are connected to the internet. There's no way that someone can get into them unless you're broken with the seal or you're.
Yeah, but it could happen. They're probably not going to target Whitley County, but it, it's possible. Maybe a little more chance in Illinois or so.
I don't know about everyone else. I'm glad you came today to do this because this is dressed, you know, it is a shock to see this number. And I think it helped me for you to come in and explain all this today, since you aren't going to be able to.
Thank you. Todd.
Good morning.
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 Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks. This is information today. Again, this did not get advertised timely, so if we were to act on it, we will have to officially act on it next month.
All right, well, thank you very much for, uh, allowing me to come in this morning and speak to all of you. First sheet that I handed out is just an update of one of the programs that, uh, I carry out here in the county as part of the 4H youth development program here in Whitley County. The side that should have been up when I handed it to you is this programming here. So it talks about our STEM program that I launched back in 2018 and it's really picked up steam. So the backside of the page you'll actually see last year, and I'll kind of let you look through that and you can kind of see the growth in that program. So, um, just in sheer numbers of events that we held. So a year ago, we only held nine events across the county in different schools. To this year, we were up to 46 events. Um, and just the number of youth that we're impacting with our STEM program, both in school and out of school. Um, the bulk of what we do is in school, so those high school students that are part of the team. We travel out to elementaries. This year, we actually reached elementary, middle and high school. This was the first time we've done anything with high school, um, and it was tremendous, so the response, so. I'm super excited about that program. Our community seems to be very excited about that program. The reach, uh, kind of to the point with that, that I need more bodies to make it happen. So I'm just one guy working with an army of volunteers. So in order to continue to make that reach and make that impact, I need more folks with me, so. So my main purpose today is to come in to ask for, um, an additional appropriation when it comes to our county extension travel and mileage budget line item. Um, so the second document that I gave you is kind of back history. So the column on the left is the year, uh, dating all the way back to 2017. And then the budget, that's the line item budget is approved by county council for each one of those years. The next line item is the dollars that were expended for mileage. And then I also included in there the mileage rate because that has definitely changed over those years, so. And you will see through there, starting in 2017, clear through 2018, 2019, our budget only fluctuated $500 there and we nearly exhausted our budget, um, each year. 2020 and 2021 was all totally impacted by COVID. You know, there, starting in March of 2020, nobody went anywhere. 2021, we were still heavily restricted on what we were doing for in-person programming. There was still a lot of virtual programming going on, but we weren't traveling like what we are now. So last year, uh, you'll see, um, our budget line item was still 8,000 for that. We still expended six, a little over 6,300. Really on the 4H youth end, we still never really opened up to engage with folks until late March. Um, so when you see on the backside of that page for 2022, we didn't even get started until the week before spring break around here. And we were still, you know, within $1,700 of exhausting our line item there. So then for this year, uh, we were only approved for 3,000 in our mileage line item budget for this year. We have currently through the month of April already expended over $2,400. Uh, we just finalized our May mileage yesterday. So that's going to take out about another 400 out of there. Um, it was a really light month. I tried not to travel when I could. So, but we're now less than $200 in that line item for the rest of the year. How will you make up that difference for the rest of the year? Where will you get that money? If we don't get the additional appropriation. So, um, because my understanding, you're asking for an additional appropriation for next year, but that's actually for operating for this year you're asking for. Yes, for this year.
When you, some mileage, where does that start from? Does that start from the office or does it start from home? Or where does the mileage start and end?
We always start at home. If it's something where we're going to professional development, for example, unless say I live in North Columbia City and let's say it's going to be, you know, Indianapolis area, I'm going to claim the office as my starting point because it's closer. If it's the other way around, I will claim home because it's the closer starting.
So what happened to the six grand roughly? And rough, this, these are rough numbers here. The 6,000 left over from 2020, the 5,000 left over from 2021 and the 1,700 left over from 2022. That's almost $13,000.
That would be.
Goes back in county general.
Does it? Okay.
Let's say in Cumber.
Well, that's good to know.
And Purdue offers no, nothing for you for mileage?
Yeah, there's, there's nothing from the university on mileage. Based to how extension statewide is funded, we're kind of a, what we call a three-legged stool. So there's federal dollars, state dollars, and then there's county dollars. So dollars actually from the university for extension don't really exist. They just manage those funds to fund extension in all 92 counties across the state. So when it comes to travel and mileage for programming for each individual county, so all 92 county extension offices. And, and I met with commissioners last week and we're sharing with them, the travel that we do is all programming, number one. Or we're going for professional development, which will come back and impact the folks right here in Whitley County in northeast Indiana. So like for example, today, I'm going to leave at noon, we're going off to, uh, 4H camp, which is just up the road in North Webster. Uh, we got 28 kids here from Whitley County that are going, which is awesome. Total, there's going to be 262 kids at camp for the next, uh, from late this afternoon through Friday. Um, and those are all right here in northeast Indiana, so.
Where do you hold your mini workshop?
The mini 4H, mini 4H workshops are, so STEM. So STEM workshops that we go out are usually, we were Northern Heights, Little Turtle Elementary, Mary Weaver. Yeah, on location. We've been, you know, obviously at the 4H center and things like that. We've been in Cherubusco, South Whitley. This year, for the first time, we did go to Pearson because there are Whitley County kids that are there, plus they're a part of our 4H program. So, um, that was awesome to do that as well.
Um, looking at last year's budget and 22's budget.
Looking at last year's budget and twenty-two's budget, is this problem? Is this what you put in your budget or did we create this problem by not funding what you asked for?
So we put the 8,000 in our budget and it was cut.
I'm, I'm trying to remember that too, Thor. I.
Yeah, I don't know why we would have done that.
And he was told if he ran out to come back before.
Okay.
I was, I was here in September prior to the approval of all county budgets and.
I remember that conversation. You brought that up.
Yeah, and we were ready to ask for additional, but it was just decided to let it ride and if we were running out, come in and ask for the additional appropriation.
I don't know what the IRS rate is on mileage. Pamela tells me that this rate comes from the state council had decided to use whatever the state said for this, this forty-nine cents a mile. Comes, comes from the state. Like I say, I don't know what the IRS allowed rate is. It's higher, probably fifty-five. How much? Yep. So.
I'd like to say I thought the sewing program that Brittany did last weekend, was it this last weekend? I believe it was. That was awesome. It had such a great turnout.
Yeah. So through some of the other different stuff that we do, some workshops for kids, so we did a cooking series where we were taking our youth, using the new stuff. So we're talking air fryers, Instapots, fancy blenders, things like that. We did three series on those. We were booked. The final one, we did a cooking with moms. We ended up with forty folks there. So we had twenty-six kids and whatever that made on moms, fourteen moms. Tons of Instapots and air fryers going on. At the end, we always give them a survey. The last question is, what's another topic of a workshop that would interest you that you would come to? And so through all these workshops over the course of the year, the top response has always been sewing. And I'm going, kids today don't like to sew, do they? And apparently they do. So.
They just don't know how.
We were gifted ten sewing machines, just totally out of the blue. So we went ahead and created the workshop, launched the registration, and literally within two hours, it was full in the middle of the day. So kids were at school. So apparently moms and dads were like, heck yeah, I want our kids to do that. I called another county and was able to source five more the following day. We reopened it and in two hours, those five spots booked. All fifteen kids showed up for all three nights and they loved it. So I kind of think some of those old, older skills are now an interest of today's kids. So, which was awesome.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Todd? Again, if we were to approve this, we have to do it at our next meeting. I'm sure he would like a general consensus too on this. Very positive youth program and family program. So, and, and I'm like you, Thor, I do not know why we cut it to 3,000. Have them come back, I guess. So. So any general consensus on this?
Yes.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Joan or Thor or Nick, any thoughts?
I'm going to restrain this. It doesn't look like a vote.
Same.
Okay. Okay. Probably see you next month, okay?
Sounds good.
Hey, Pamela?
Okay, here's just some fun thing up here. These are some state building leads and lawyers. When we receive, when someone has a lien on their property, it's usually because it's like a property that the house can see they're torn down or there's like cleaning up there. So you know, like a couple come in with a lien on. Obviously, people don't always pay in a kind of manner. They're probably paid to have all the cleanup with their motion done and the fund goes negative. They were, the mom says recently, they're a lot on it and they said, that's not okay. We cannot have negative funds. We will get a write-up because Pamela's back. We get a bit of a thing to bear of. So we got two transfers here out of funds just to clean up those negative.
How old are the negative funds?
I'm pretty sure we went back, we can only go back to 2011. Looks like the toys set us this way. We're still researching what the proper way to do it. And to be honest, we've kind of reached out to the counties and come up with a better system. Unfortunately, the state can't really advise us on what to do other than just what not to do.
Since they're pretty aged, can you confidently say it hasn't been paid?
We've gone back and are able to compare. We can go back to like the property card and see who paid their liens and has that match in their mouth. So we've gone back and pretty much as best we can, matched that who paid what and have really gotten down to that little bit of plus. So we can only do the best we can by going back.
And that's the lien on the property until it sells. A lot of cases, we won't collect any money until it changes hands. Is that correct? Unless they, unless they decide to, all of a sudden, to pay, you know. So they just, we need to clean this account up. Like I say, state board of council might be in the Navy. So they're wanting us to put it in the plus.
Make a motion to approve the transfer resolution.
I have a motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Joan, that we approve the transfer resolution. Now, we can do this today, right? Any further questions? I'll ask for the vote. Everyone in favor, raise your right hand. Anyone opposed, the same. I can pass. Okay, next on the agenda is overtime compensation that we tabled at our last meeting. I know there's been considerable discussion with departments and so forth on this. I don't know if Chad or Jennifer would want to remind us of how this is. I know that it currently, it was changed in December, correct, Chad?
Yeah, both the board of commissioners and council approved changes to the policy manual in 2022 for an effective date in 2023. And among those changes were changes to the, the procedures for calculating overtime hours for calculating hours worked versus PTO and bereavement, holidays, that sort of thing. So that, I think that the, the change there was that previously, everything counted toward hours worked for the purpose of calculating overtime pay. And then moving into the new policy, it did not. That you actually had to work hours for those hours to count toward being calculated. So then we heard concerns from employee, from employees and paused to review, to make, to, to just to look at it and, and, and see if we're doing the right thing or not. And so then commissioners did vote to revert back to the old policy where PTO holidays, bereavement would count toward hours worked for the purpose of calculating overtime pay. But as has always been the practice, council is the second level of approval. So then council would also need to take a vote on that policy.
Jen, anything to add to that?
I have a question.
That was a question.
Yeah. If the commissioners vote to reinstate or not, and it goes secondary to council, where's the final vote?
Council.
I mean, I think we'd have to find common ground. We'd have to compromise. We both have to.
I was just, that just, the way you explained that, it made it sound like there wasn't a, you know, I didn't know where that final vote was actually.
Both, I think both bodies have to agree on something. Because if, if you, if council votes no and commissioners vote yes, then we're at a stalemate. Like we're, can't really do anything. So we have to agree. That's my, like I said in the last meeting, I don't know why council is the second level of approval, but that's the way it's always.
I don't understand why we're second level of approval either. I understand we are financial.
My understanding is, is that as far as the policy, that's where you guys make the decision. And as far as us then funding the policy, that's why it has to be a double, double problem. Because we still have to fund it. If we don't fund it, or if we vote not to fund it, then you've got a policy that can't be supported. So I think you're correct. And it needs, that we all need to probably come to a consensus. But I think the reason that it's both of us is because we can, we vote for the approval of it. It's essentially our part of it. That's my understanding.
Because it has been taken out of the budget. Our current budget does not support this, correct? It was taken out at the beginning of the year?
I don't believe so because the budget process would have been prior to any changes to the to the policy manual.
Any other discussion on this? Like I say, I know that many of you reached out to other department, to departments that this affects a lot in some cases or it appears with them. So thoughts, comments on your discussions or anything like that? This did come from a recommendation of, of our labor attorney, right?
I'll let Jennifer speak to that. I don't know for sure.
I, I wouldn't say that it's a recommendation. I do have that email that I provided to you just for clarification. His statement was, in order to make, come to a decision, you should ask yourself a question. And the question was, if we do not apply paid time off as hours worked for calculating overtime, will we have a difficult time finding employees to work overtime in critical need areas? If the answer is yes, then you probably want to count paid time off as hours worked. If on the other hand, you have the ability to assign overtime and it is not voluntary, then you don't need to count paid time off as hours worked. A majority of my clients do not count paid time off as hours worked. That was his statement. So I wouldn't really call that a recommendation. He was just suggesting that you ask yourself that question in order to make a decision.
Thor, I believe you were going to speak. Or did I interrupt you?
No, I said what I needed to say there, but if we're ready for a motion, I'll turn it up.
I don't know that we're quite ready for a motion. I'd, I'd like to hear any.
Well, I found this, I found this, I did my investigation on this. I found this, this is a very difficult vote. Very difficult. You have your heart you're dealing with and you have our job we're dealing with. And that's where I, I found this to be very difficult to come to a conclusion on. But I did do, I did go out and I did talk to people and I understand how they feel. And how I feel. You've got to go by your heart or you got to go by financial.
I'd also have talked to several members of our employees. I'm going to have to agree with what the commissioners recommend and that's what I represent on this.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to follow the commissioner's recommendation and revert back to the policy that we had before January first.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Thor, a second by Nick, that we follow the commissioner's recommendation and revert back to a policy of the way it was prior to December of, of last year.
Well, my motion was January first. Do I need to amend that motion? When did that take effect?
That January one. Well, yeah, you voted for it in December, right?
Yeah, I had a policy that's back January one.
So, so, so my motion is prior to January first, that would be appropriate?
Any further discussion?
I mean, I, I've also been around and talked to a few. I mean, our budget's tight, really tight. And the package that the employees have now for Whitley County, and some of you say it's, it's not that good or it's not the best. Well, where I worked forty-two years, you've got a very, very nice package. You've got very, very nice hours. Some departments, not all departments. I, I have a real tough time paying overtime for time not worked. And I understand there's at least three departments that you've got to kind of look at differently. But this is what you want to do for a living. You know what you were getting when you, when you came to this position. And, and I'm sorry, I, I mean, when I worked, I got things taken away from me over the forty-two year. Okay? So, I mean, this is life, just like Purdue is in here. Okay? They need more money. The state's not going to give us any more money. So we got to figure out where that money's going to come from. And exactly the same way with overtime. We're going to have to figure out where it comes from. I mean, it's, it's not, we're not going to pay you. You're just not going to get your time and a half. It's not that. And I mean, the, the days you get off of what, like I said, the package sounds it. You can argue, but I think it's a pretty good package. I'm, I'm not sure I can. I don't want to go against commissioners all the time, but that's just where I worked with what I went through. That's what I.
I would, I would add to your conversation that I think the main departments that this is going to create, this is an issue to our emergency services, probably in dire times of snow emergencies, having to cover schedules at the sheriff's department and dispatch. And those are essential services that we owe to the citizens of Whitley County to make sure that not only our employees are compensated fairly for when they have to come in, but to keep that enthusiastic spirit to cover those shifts because sometimes they can be very hard to cover. And that's why I think it's important that we go back to the way it was.
With, with two hundred and sixty-plus employees, I think it's important for we, us to be consistent. Consistent in our thinking and manners. Talked to a lot of people that work outside in the public and they don't get this perk. Surrounding counties and governmental do not give this perk. So I think it does have some merit that we really did need to look at it. I think it will if, if we approve it, I think that hopefully the employees appreciate it. Some of the language I heard in the last two weeks, I would tell you would, would drive me toward a no vote. Because it proved to me that they did not appreciate their benefit package that they have. And like I said, it, it would drive me to a no vote because of that, because it is a generous package. When you ask the public or you tell the public that package, they're, they're pretty, they can't believe it at some times that that is that way. But the thing is, out here in, in the, in the private sector, most of the people I ran into, no, they, they did not, they did not get that. Again, surrounding counties, now I think a couple of them gave it because of bereavement and, and things like that, which I can totally understand. So, so it is is tough. I, I understand Thor's comments on some of these departments. I understand Jones because it, it does get your heart too. So I think, I think it's. because it, it does get your heart too. So I think, I think it's, uh, a tough issue to face, but we have to face it. So we, any other comments?
I mean, if we have any other, where the Commissioners and Council both have to agree on something, I'd like to have a meeting prior or a meeting together with the Commissioners on something like this, so we can get our general feeling all at one meeting instead of, you know, you, you're voting, then bring it to us, and we have to. I'd rather have one joint meeting and discuss something like this before, or, so that's, that's my concern. And I, you know, like I said, I don't want to go against what the Commissioners say, but, you know, there's some things that, uh, just like Jones said, you got, it, it's real, real tough. It's what your heart needs to do, or what you need to do for the count.
I think we have to remember the frequency that this would occur as well. And it's not very often. Like I spoke with the guys at Maintenance, and it's, it's rare, but for morale and for an employee to be enthusiastic about coming in when they don't necessarily have to. I mean, I think, I think it's something we need to seriously consider.
I have nothing to say.
Anything else? Any other discussion? We do have a motion on the floor?
Well, I'll say that, um, I respectfully disagree with Tom. I don't think this issue comes to us, as the Commissioners noted, the other way. I think it was a natural progression to come to us after they had voted to approve the change. If they would have voted not to approve the change, then it wouldn't even have come to us. We wouldn't even be addressing the issue. So that's where I think a joint discussion or meeting on this, um, would have been counterproductive to the way the system is set up for that decision to take place or for this to progress. That's my opinion on it. I would also add that I used to work for a company that, um, in case y'all don't know, there's a federal law that says that you have to pay an employee overtime after, uh, anything over 171 hours in a 28-day period. This law was put in place back during the Industrial Revolution where, um, employees were forced to more conditional hours for pay. And as a former employee of a system that did not pay overtime until you got to that 171 hours, where that gap time hours were only paid at your hourly rate, it was very hard sometimes to cover schedules in emergency service situations, very hard. That's why this is necessary, and this is why we support our people. And I think it's still being responsible to the taxpayer, because we're providing essential services to them that is not going to be covered by, um, an outside agency or company.
Did the city, how, how did the city handle this, Thor? You, you just retired. How did they handle this?
I'll repeat it, but that's what I just said.
Oh, I, okay, but they paid.
City employees were required to work 171 hours in a 28-day cycle. If we worked outside of our scheduled time, which a lot of times was 160 hours, which is a 40-hour work week, right? So that left an 11-hour gap in a 28-day cycle, that even if we worked over 40-hour work weeks, you had to work 11 more hours before you got overtime. And that discouraged a lot of.
But we're not talking about hours worked. We're talking about, uh, PTO and.
But that's all, but that's, I'm using that as an example. That's all part of the equation of what we're talking about here. But that's how a former company that I worked for did.
So, all right, sum this up. Did they, did they pay on benefit time? Is that what you're saying? They did pay overtime once they reached that, they included that overtime or the benefit time, vacation, holidays, deaths in that hourly count? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but it, but what I'm also saying is that it never got to that point. I think in 29 years, I might have gotten overtime three times in 29 years.
Yeah, I agree it doesn't happen often. I mean, going around and talking to the department heads. I mean, they can tell you it doesn't happen often.
I do want to thank everyone that did reach out, both sides, to talk, and, and that take, does take time and, uh, shows a commitment on both sides, and I, and I think everybody appreciates that. Okay, got a motion. Any further discussion? Have a motion on the floor. All in favor of approving the motion?
Is your second?
Yep, Nick seconded it. Raise your right hand. Are those opposed? The same. Four to three, passes. So it reverts back to what it was. Now, we need to understand, people, that the budget request we have is, we have to shave out $900,000. So as you look at back at your budgets and so forth, and your requests, you need to understand that we got a tougher job coming up yet, uh, on that budget. So, uh, and, and as department heads, I would ask that you do go over your benefit package with your employees, because sometimes that's lost in the shuffle. And we do, I believe, have a very nice benefit package for our people. But in my conversations, like I said, if I went by the, their attitude and, and the way they talked, and then my vote would have been no today, please go over that benefit package. Right? Okay, we'll move on. Chad, you got a report for?
Um, just a few things. Uh, the Commissioners yesterday approved amendments to the solar ordinance that, uh, changed the setbacks, um, from property line, uh, 1,500 feet. Uh, we did a rezoning, uh, at Crooked Lake at the old golf course from, um, we, we rezoned a village commercial for the, what used to be the clubhouse. And as far as the jail, we continue to have our bi-weekly, uh, meetings, talking about the progress that had been made over the previous two weeks, plus, uh, what we should expect to see in the next two weeks. And Jim and I had talked about that, and, and a member of Council is always more than welcome to come. We do meet today at 2:00. We can have, have you added to the meeting invite so that you can get a reminder on your calendar. We, we'd have to be careful of a quorum, but a member of, kind of, if you have, Council wanted to name someone and maybe name an alternate, that might be a good idea. And I did talk to, uh, Elavatus and Wigan, and, and they said, yeah, absolutely, more the merrier, bring them out. So that's how Council would like to proceed with that. Great.
Any questions for Chad? I, I will say that, and Rob, you're, you're firsthand on this. So far, five, uh, council people have met with Rob and four Commissioners and went over claims. And Nick, being the new guy, really getting his eyes open on it, but we're taking the time to, to sit with, with the Commissioners and, and at their invitation, uh, to go over those claims. And I think it's, I think it's going good, uh, and so forth, uh, really seeing firsthand how those funds are spent. Uh, as Chad brought up, uh, their committee has been meeting every two weeks, correct?
Yep, bi-weekly, yes.
And we've talked, and he thought that maybe we're just going to use the original committee that's, that was on the jail design. And I think we need to have two people, uh, nom, or work on this, so there always will be one at the meeting, to, that, uh, set in. So we, we have a, a person on that. So, uh, if anybody wants that twice a month?
Yes.
And at the same time, 2:00?
Every other Tuesday at 2:00.
Yeah. So do I have any volunteers to, uh, be on that? You'll work with another council person to make sure that we do have someone there.
You have suggestions who you'd like on there?
Is that a volun- are you volunteering?
Just, no, I'm asking.
No, I, I do not, uh.
Are you asking for one, or you're asking for two?
I'm asking for two, and then you work out your schedule among yourself, who's going to attend the meetings that day or that week. So that way, we, we have a pre- we'll always have a presence there, should, unless there is a double conflict.
I, I will. I'll be one.
Okay, have Joan. Tom, are you volunteering?
I mean, if, you two have been around a whole lot longer, what do you two want on there? I'm fine, or whatever. I can't, I will, unless, okay, somebody else would like to pick up.
I think Chairman want to be on.
So.
Do you prefer to be on it?
No, no, I, you two are fine. Yeah.
Are you going today, or am I going today?
You're going today. I, I will say, we meet onsite now, so probably wear some, uh,
Tennis shoes?
Some good.
Steel-toed shoes? I got them.
Yeah, something that you can get dirty in.
2:00.
2:00.
Yep. So I guess we've made the appointment. Thanks, Kim. Appreciate that. Minutes of our last meeting.
Thank you for the approvals presented. Second.
Got a motion by Thor, a second by Tom. We approved the minutes of our May 2nd meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, the same. Comments from the audience? Councilman Barrett?
I attended the Association of Indiana Counties on the legislative wrap-up. I have the program run out. Anybody would like to have it, we'll give it to that one, if you can run out for us.
I do, I forgot going to the next.
Joan?
Um, during my travels around to speak to department heads over the overtime, I sat with Janelle at the 911 Dispatch Center, and I talked to her because Jim had mentioned he would like Council to go and sit on a shift. And I did talk to Janelle on that, and she was in agreement. That way, when we start getting involved in 911 decisions for radios or whatever they have coming up, we're going to understand it a little bit better. And I'm just coming forth to you, Mr. Chairman, that we need to get that going, because there are several others.
Right, right.
So I don't know how to pers- how you want to proceed.
I think if, if you have some ti- an opening in time, uh, that your schedule frees up, I would assume get ahold of you, Janelle, right? And.
Janelle, does it matter when? Okay.
Okay, I, I think that's another good idea, and we had talked, and you, you had went over and visited and that, so if you get some time, uh, you can set in on that. I think it, I, like Joan, I think it'd be very educational. Councilman Hodges?
I would just like to say that, um, I will always respect the process and any decisions that are made as, um, a whole from us, and I will support the process in making those decisions. But I will also say that, um, I don't always agree with everything that is set up here, nor will I represent myself on comments that are made in discussions, um, because some of them make me uncomfortable at times. So with that being said, I have nothing else.
I have nothing.
Mr. Warner?
What happened on you?
Mr. Wheeler?
I have nothing.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone.